Five to zero. We'll now move to item 3B, which is no longer on the consent calendar. That is the engineering design services amendment to the joint city council slash CSD on-call professional services agreement. I'm not aware that there is a staff presentation, per se, so, but unless Mr. Klotzel, you'd like to make any— All right. So, Mrs. McDonald, I think the appropriate protocol would be to go ahead and ask you to go ahead and start, and we'll go from there.
Well, the reason I asked that it be pulled is I would like to vote on it separately and just make a couple of comments, and I'll do the same thing over in the city council side. The main purpose of this is to study the widening of Los Poses between—what are we going up to—plus from Pleasant Valley to Ventura Boulevard, and widening it from four to six lanes. And partly, my understanding is, is because of an expansion at the airport. And I do not believe that has been invented. As far as the public goes, I think it's being rushed through. And if indeed it is because of the—that increase or that development at the airport, I don't think the city of Camrio should be paying the price to do any of the studies. It should be who wants to have that work done. And I don't believe—it may have been way back in somewhere in our CIP budget that this existed, that someday it might be six lanes, but it was never on my radar. And it really isn't something that I think's appropriate to go from four lanes to six lanes and then back to two. And so for that reason, I just wanted to vote no.
All right. I'm actually going to ask some questions, but I think it's going to be after Mr. Morgan, because you just raised your hand.
Right. Being on Airport Authority, and this being brought up, I've been against doing that until something happens in the county side. I can see it on ramp. It comes from that new project, but turning into six lanes all the way down, county's going to have to do some of that pain, not us. Because they want an extra lane that goes into the airport—I mean, into the fire area, fire department area also. Well, that always benefit the county. I think that, at this time, I think we're going way premature until we see what the county's going to do, actually. Remember, they were going to come back and tell us they're going to do some things, if they were going to do anything. And so, and I can't vote for this today.
All right. What I'd like to do is ask a series of questions, because this staff report, and it being on consent calendar, caught my eye as well. And I think it's important because probably very few folks out in the audience have any idea what in the world we are talking about. So, I think it's important to get some context here. First of all, this item is for—this item is to authorize the district manager to execute an agreement with a engineering firm for conceptual design services for widening Los Poses Road to six lanes from Pleasant Valley Road to Ventura Boulevard. This existing consultant that is doing work for the city and the district, he has been doing other work unrelated to this particular matter. The reason, as I understand it, that it's in front of the sanitary district board, as well as the city council, is that, long time ago, both the sanitary district and the city council were signatories to this agreement. And so, therefore, that's why the—why it's coming up first tonight in front of the sand district board.
That's correct.
And we're going to get—we have the same item, I know, on the—actually, at this point, still on the consent calendar for the city council meeting, but I think it's appropriate to ask these questions now. So, with all of that in mind, and I know that this matter has been reviewed previously in study session, but looking at this matter as an integrated whole, what caught my eye in the staff report is that the need for widening is based on the existing—and I quote, "on the existing and expected future traffic volumes, which cause this existing four-lane section of Los Poses Road to function at less than the city's acceptable threshold level of service C." I'm also aware that in the exhibit to this agreement, the consultant is saying, and I quote under big page B5, the consultant is saying, "This study will review existing and future traffic impacts to Los Poses Road and any intersections due to impacts from Camrio Airport." But I also know that later on, on the council's agenda tonight, there is a mitigation fee item under item 3I, big page five. And that mentions—I guess it's probably the right way to phrase it—is that there's an anticipation that there will be a general plan amendment referral application submitted for the sports park—for a sports park at Pleasant Valley Road and Los Poses. Well, that's how I'm reading page I5, so if I've misread it, it's on page I5, 3I5.
Under city council.
Under city council, under the scope of services for Iterus. And this is the proposal for amendment number one to Camrio impact fee update for latest traffic circulation improvement plan and proposed US 101 northbound auxiliary lanes. So, when I read those together in juxtaposition, those, to me, seem like they—we need to talk about it as an integrated whole. So, finally, now, coming to my question, my understanding from staff, based on that study session, is that the need for this work was based on the existing traffic volumes in that stretch of road, as they are right now, without—because of the level of service issues, without adding into the mix future anticipated traffic volumes attributable to the hangar project at the airport or potential of the sports park. Is my understanding correct or incorrect?
In general, yes, that is correct. The traffic modeling, not including those—the airport and then the sports facility that you're referencing down at the intersection of Pleasant Valley and Los Poses.
Right.
Right. So, I would like to clarify, though, in that item, it's ahead on the agenda, but you referenced that, you know, the consent 3I, big page five, that is referencing the existing sports park development, essentially Village of the Park in its entirety, and including the sports park out there. This is not referencing the proposed, yet to be submitted, other sports facility.
So, that's referencing PV fields—
That's correct.
—as opposed to—but that said, there is—I've seen reports that there is anticipation that the developer or proposed—there may be—a general plan amendment referral application filed with the city for a sports park, or a sports center, or a sports facility at the corner of Pleasant Valley and Los Poses, correct?
I'd look to—
I've seen that in reports.
There was a request last year, obviously, that was analyzed and was not allowed to proceed on through a referral process. I've been in contact, as a follow-up, to inquiries from that developer in particular. And from what I understand, they are not going to be filing a general plan amendment referral application for this cycle.
Okay. Because what I just said, I took out of a recent economic development committee report that I read. So, that was my understanding, based on that report that was provided to me. Okay. So, let's go back, then—so, let's say that's off to the side. Let's go back to the primary question, which is, is this work to be done premised on existing traffic volumes as they are right now, or because of additional work? It goes to Mrs. McDonald's question, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
It's both. So, and as Councilmember McDonald mentioned, that this item has been identified in our CIP document for some time. It's been a part of our traffic mitigation fee program for a number of years, quite a few years, and identifying the potential need, based on future anticipated traffic volumes, that a widening of Los Poses—the stretch of Los Poses—would be required to operate at level service C or better. Currently—so, based on the current counts are at 26,000 daily trips, average daily trips, which, under our adopted circulation element for primary arterials, is listed at operating nearly LOS level service D for 26,000 ADT for a four-lane arterial.
For a four-lane.
Four-lane. That's current existing counts that had been verified recently within the traffic study that was prepared for the Hotel Conference Center. That confirmed the existing traffic counts, along with our own—
Right. That was in the EIR.
—traffic counts, correct. The projected forecast for 2030 is at 33,000 average daily trips for this stretch of Los Poses. Under current four-lane configuration, that would operate at LOS F, level service F, for 33,000—a volume of 33,000 trips.
So, let me recap it a different way. Regardless of the proposed development of the hangar project at the airport, or whatever improvements may be constructed or proposed by the county at the airport, is it staff's opinion that this segment of Pleasant Valley Road needs to be widened to six lanes?
Correct. Based on the existing and future traffic volumes, yes.
Well, is it based on just existing traffic volumes, or is it because of existing plus future? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Right.
I'm not trying to pick—
Let me—I—
—Mrs. McDonald, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Could I just ask one thing, that I think is missing from your question?
Sure.
Do you anticipate additional traffic without any development at the airport? Or are you looking—
Yes.
—only at future development at the airport?
No. It's—that future number is our traffic forecast model, based on build-out of the city's general plan, as currently zoned, so that would not include anticipation of that other sports facility that isn't even in the zoning.
So, if nothing else changed, we found ourselves static, as of right now. We—staff's opinion would be, we still need to look at the efficacy of widening that segment of roadway to six lanes from four, even if there's no other improvements done.
Just go ahead and want two lanes.
Correct. Based on the existing traffic volumes, yes. We're there at operating nearly at LOS D.
Right now.
And I'll also add, and the timing here has come up because of the need to identify the right-of-way width and improvement widths necessary for this eventual future widening. We don't know when that construction is actually going to happen, we're at a very preliminary advanced planning stage to identify the width requirements and the lane configuration, such to identify what requirements would be placed on development at the airport, specifically the hangar project, which is moving forward, that—to identify where those improvements would need to be planned for, the future improvements. Any development out there needs to be planned for accordingly with what ultimate future width is going to be required for the widening.
And I also understand, segueing to the airport improvements, that that—what the county staff is anticipating for environmental review of that proposed project is a joint SEQUA NEPA document. Am I—that might be a better question for Mr. Vaca, rather than you, but is that a correct understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Which is going to take some time to complete.
That's correct.
Would the—would the work that is being done by this contract, then, be of use in informing the city's review of whatever environmental document comes out of the county's process? In other words, is it going to be useful—
Of course, yes.
—to us, to the city?
I believe so, yes.
In terms of evaluating what the county wants to do with that hangar project?
Correct.
Okay.
But shouldn't—the—to me, if the county's doing that, the streets have to be part of the study.
Yes.
They can't do it in isolation. So, this should be on the back of the county, as they go forward with their project. And they—I'm sorry to interrupt, but could I ask another question?
No, you can—keep going.
If you're telling me that—with no general plan amendments, with the general plan the way it is today, that you're going to have that large increase in traffic, what is going to be built between Los Poses and Ventura Boulevard? There's an airport—
Right.
—and there's a vacant lot, or vacant acreage.
A hotel. Right. And it's—not just—
But that's not between Ventura and Los—where are those people going? The hotels go in the other direction.
The other developments within the city are going to generate trips that will use this section of road.
Coming from where?
Coming to and from the city, into the county, to Oxnard, to—
So, you're going to take—
The bases.
So, you're going to take a four-lane road, you're going to open it up for this very short section to six, and then you're going to take it down to two lanes, back to the county.
And the county has plans to analyze the need for widening that also. That's on their plans.
And that was one of the questions you were going to find out, is when they had planned on doing that.
Yeah. We presented that at study session on October 24th.
Thought we didn't have—
It was years. It's not today, not up to—not very soon.
Let him tell what it was.
I know. It's our study session.
You're correct. The exact date for when—let me get the information correct. Well, that was a big study session item.
Yeah, it was.
So, the first item on the book for the county is to look at a feasibility study for widening Pleasant Valley Road from Rice Avenue up to Los Poses Road. And that's scheduled for fiscal year 2019, '20, for a feasibility study. And then, the stretch of Los Poses, they're starting further down south, from Wynimi Road up to Fifth Street, with a feasibility study for that widening, followed by—and then that's scheduled for 2021 fiscal year. And then, the next stretch from Fifth Street up to Pleasant Valley would follow after that, and that's correct. There's no date determined for that. And we—there's no information from the county to provide a date at this point for that.
And the other—if I might just—the other thing you were going to find out for us is, my recollection was, when the fire station was approved with access onto Los Poses, that that was going to be the only access off the airport onto Los Poses.
So, there is an agreement in place between the county and the city for that—specifically for the installation of that signal. And that addresses specifically the signal only. And there are no further restrictions for other access off of Los Poses as a part of that agreement.
For the signal?
That's correct.
So, it was a discussion, not in the agreement?
We're continuing to research if there's anything else in place. But as of tonight, there is no other documentation for any other restrictions of access.
No written memorialization?
Correct.
Okay. I think Mr. Morgan was on deck, and then followed by Mrs. Craven.
Yeah, a couple of things, because we discussed this at length, both at the Airport Authority and our study session. And one of the problems I see is, if you don't have the county coming and proving that roadway between Pleasant Valley Road and Fifth Street, you're going to have a problem, because you can't get past level D, because you're going to have four lanes coming into two. How do you expect that to make any improvements if the lanes on the other side are only one? It's coming from, you know, coming from Camrio to that area. It's still going to be in level F. That's not going to improve it until that section is done. Now, you're talking about Pleasant Valley Road getting—that's the first one. That's because all the traffic backed up Pleasant Valley, all the way from Industries and other people, cutting over to Oxnard and Wynimi, have learned to use that road and Fifth Street, because Fifth Street's the other roadway that they use. It's—that's a big, bad situation right now. Get out there at four or five o'clock, five o'clock, and see how long you have to wait for that stoplight. Okay? Because that—this isn't going to help that, until they get that lane over on the other side finished. Then you might have some help. That's why I'm waiting—I'm wondering if we're a little too premature, until the county has set a time when they're going to build that. Done.
Are you formulating a question? No, there's no question, Pam.
Well, I ask him, is it going to be any better traffic with three lanes going into the one than it is if we—you know, without fixing that lane? How's that going to help?
It'll be better to able to answer that question if we proceed with this work of conceptual design and advanced planning. At this point, I can't answer that, but that's what this step is intended to do, is to answer those types of questions.
I think what my question—my—I was hoping you'd say, yeah, it's going to be a problem for a while, until they get that finished. Because you can't say it's not.
Existing condition is going to continue until something's done.
Exactly.
All right. Mrs. Craven.
I have two things. One thing is, this says that they're going to also bring us back alternatives. And even though at the study session, it was pointed out that, according to the plan, it would still continue to have one right turn lane. I've talked to a lot of people who go turn right, and I would hope that there would be one alternative that would be studied with two right turn lanes, as you're southbound. If—especially if Pleasant Valley is going to be widened. There are a lot of people who go to the right and follow Pleasant Valley from Los Poses. But my comment on this one is, that I believe that if we're going to study what we need in the city, we need to have it our study. If we want to have the airport pay for part of it, that's one thing. That would be a separate agreement. But it needs to be our study. We need to determine what we need. We don't need some other government agency to tell us what we need. And so, I can support this, because it is to tell us what we need in the future. And I'm hoping it will look at what the county is planning to do in those timelines.
Mr. Colley?
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing this up. I think what the airport potentially wants to do will have a significant impact on the city. It was not, in my opinion, very well-vetted at the Airport Authority, for a number of reasons. However, I do think that we need to get some data gathered here. And I'm a little bit—you know, it's interesting to me to see that we're at, I believe, Dave, you said, 6,000 trips, and then 10 to 15 years, it could be up to 33,000 trips. If that number's somewhat correct, which I think we don't quite know exactly, I'm hoping this study will help us determine what—that's a significant jump. Now, as Mrs. McDonald said, I don't quite know where all that traffic's going to be originated from, but I'd like to get some more data to see if that, in fact, is somewhere in that ballpark, because that's a significant jump up here. So, I do think that we need to start this process here and get some data. So, all of us that are up here can get some data between us here and say, "Look, this is what the study says," so we're not necessarily just, you know, flying at a certain altitude here. As we all know, you know, traffic is increasing for various reasons. We're all aware of that. But I do think that, obviously, what's been brought up here, that, you know, the county has got—you know, you go from a two-lane to a four or a six, and I get that, it's bottleneck. We all know how it is in Ventura. We lived with that for many, many years. But I do think that we need to get some kind of data about what's going on. But I will say, when this other situation pops up, especially with the airport, I for sure am going to have a whole lot to say about it, and I hope that a lot of others will as well.
I have a couple of comments. No, actually, I still have a question, Mr. Klotzel. I'm still struggling with this. Would it be fair to say that, in staff's view, the city needs this study based just on existing conditions, without—even without adding in the new airport project?
That is fair to say.
Okay. So, we'll see how many ways I can figure out how to repeat the same thing. But it's based on existing conditions, correct?
Correct, especially with the timing of the need to identify—if there is a need for the ultimate width out there, and how that's going to impact anything that is built along this stretch of Los Poses.
And I see from the scope of work, and specifically, I'm referring to big page B7, and the components of the widening study, is that there are very specific work—there's very specific work set up for assessment of existing traffic conditions, and existing traffic conditions with project, and assessment of future traffic conditions. So, that's part of this—of the work as this—of this contract, correct?
That's correct.
And is it also fair to say—and I apologize for being redundant—is also fair to say that the work that this consultant will perform will inform the city's review of whatever environmental documents the county is going to produce?
Yes.
Okay. Well, for both of those reasons, based on—we need—it—this is being done based on the way it is right now, even without the airport being in place. And number two, it would inform the city's ability and the city's and council's analysis of whatever environmental review documents are going to be coming out from the county, which we don't know what those are going to be yet. I can support this, because I think the city is going to need this information.
Can I just add one—
Mrs. Craven.
—one other thing that I neglected to say earlier. I can remember long ago, during discussions of—well before we made definite plans for a hotel convention center. I can remember the discussions with people from the university. They were very, very much for this, because they felt that a convention center would be very beneficial to them, especially if a hotel was attached to it. So, I believe that there are going to be a lot of—there will be a lot of traffic coming from the hotel convention center, turning south on Ventura—south on Los Poses, and then going out to the university through Laguna Road, or maybe Pleasant Valley, or one of those others that goes on over to Lewis, at times.
Mr. Morgan?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just—
Can I ask a question—one question? Maybe a view. How can this consultant assess the future pedestrian, bicycle conditions, the future conditions with new projects, when we don't know what those projects are?
That's actually an appropriate question to ask our public works director.
And I know you—I'm asking you, kind of, because you came to the conclusion that that was good, but how do you do it?
Well, no, I didn't write the scope of the contract. I didn't discuss it with anybody.
I mean, I can see what you were going for was, okay, today, which I kind of disagree with. I think we've got other streets in town that are worse than this one, but—
No, no, but that's not the point. I just wanted to know why we needed this agreement. I mean, to be fair, is it based on the extant conditions, or is it based on future? And what I'm hearing is something a little different than what was in the staff report. And that is that the staff is saying that it's based on existing conditions, the way they are now. And I don't want to stick my head in the sand. If it's something that we need because of existing level of service D conditions—anyway, keep going. I think that's a question you should pose to Mr. Klotzel.
So, what is it they study?
So, any study is based on what is known at the time, including our general plan, our zoning maps, our forecasted developments. That is what is included in any study of this sort, and that's what it will be based on.
So, not what the airport's going to do, not potential general plan amendments, the sports park, which Mr. Trimbley talked about, only on today's existing, what we know today?
What we know is planned today, and we know of two items that are planned at the airport, so that will be included. Those—the hangar project at the northeast corner, and the fire training facility at the, if you will, southeast corner of the airport.
I just have one more comment, then I'll be quiet. But it's the old building, and they shall come. And I hate to see us build something. This is not a contract to have somebody build a new street. It's—but it's the start of it, and that's where it starts. And pretty soon, it's—you have—well, we have the study on this shelf that says we can do it, and this is how you do it. And then the next thing, well, you already got the study, you know how to do it, so, okay, let's approve it. That's—it's that snowball effect, that that's how we get—where we get with so many of these projects.
Well, the difficulty—if I ever—the difficulty I have with that is, having a study isn't in and of itself some sort of growth-inducing impact. Where I'm coming from is trying to figure out what's—I have my own skepticism about whatever environmental review document comes out from the county. Let me just put it that way. And it's going to be a joint SEQUA NEPA review. And I think that's going to take—
A long—
—a while. I would like the city—I would like the city to be in a position—I'd like to have the council in an informed position to be able to respond to that and critique it. And I guess where I'm coming from, Mrs. McDonald, is if we have—I think this study lends value to that process. It informs a future decision of this council. Otherwise, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Gotcha. All right.
Mr. Morgan?
Tony, I'd be all for this, if they showed us a plan to extend Pleasant Valley to Fifth Street, where you'd have two lanes, and that would alleviate a lot of the traffic jam there, a lot, significantly. But they have no plans of when or if they're going to expand that. I think we need that information before we can start planning things to come to a jam. You're still going to be an F with that like that.
Go ahead, Mr. Colley.
One more question. Yeah, Dave, so, I just want to get back, in your professional opinion, even without the county doing anything, as it stands right now, are you of the opinion that we need to start this study, just to deal with the traffic that's generated right now?
Yes. It's prudent and makes sense to do that at this point, knowing what we know now with the volumes and the planned projects.
And we have tried to make our—
And we have tried to make our intersections not less than a level D since I've been up here.
That's correct.
That is one of the reasons why we put in the Springville, because at that intersection on Los Poses, it was at a level D or very, very close to that. That's one of the reasons why we put in Springville, is that not right?
Correct.
Okay. And that did help, the numbers, for the time being, with, when Springville did come into action here, it did help those numbers on Los Poses, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
By the way, is there only F in town? That intersection, three times, you'd had to wait for stoplights at one point.
I think we've.
I will move the approval of item B on the consent calendar. I don't think it's on the consent calendar anymore. Okay, under what had been item B on the consent calendar, I will move the approval of it. We didn't move it to any place.
Do I hear a second?
Be in second, I'll second it.
All right, Director Kildee is seconding. Any other comments? Please vote. Okay, the motion passes on a three to two vote, with Directors McDonald and Morgan dissenting.